I'd like to call the December 8th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording the meeting. Seeing none, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Chief Coleman. Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, I'm gonna do public comment here and then I'll come up.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. First, I just wanted to announce that this year, the Santa Tour will be held on Saturday, December 20th. It'll be leaving fire headquarters at 11 o'clock in the morning. This is our 60th year that the Fire Rescue Department has been doing the Santa Tour. So, we're very happy that we're able to continue this tradition. I would like to encourage the public to visit our website because the route does change on occasion from year to year. Every year we do this, it is a bit of a learning experience. We try to alter the route, not heavily, but we do try to alter the route to try to eliminate some of the backtracking that we do on certain streets. And the other thing that the public, you know, needs to understand is that the tower truck that we're using to do it, it's a fairly large truck, so we have to sort of plan the route where it's a continuous loop because we can't do any stops in backing up. So, there is a couple of alterations to it, I believe, with one, maybe two, streets this year. So, again, I encourage the public to go to the website, AuburnMassFire.org, click on the Santa Tour button, they can open up the route. There are approximate times next to some of the streets, so they can see approximately when Santa will be coming by. Again, we have to take certain things into consideration, weather, calls, so there may be some delays in that. But, we're going to be doing, again, like we did last year, we will be live tweeting and posting Santa's location every hour on Facebook and Twitter. So, you can follow us on Auburn Mass Fire, both Facebook and Twitter, to get by-the-hour updates on Santa's location. So, we're looking forward to it, again, 60th year, we're happy we can bring it back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The Chief also has two items on the agenda tonight. I entertain a motion to move up items 6A and 6B.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Chief, first, we have declare surplus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, you have a letter in your packet dated December 4th. As you're aware, that we recently placed the new self-contained breathing apparatus into service. This letter is requesting that the board declare our older SCBA equipment, which would be a total of 13 air packs, 32 bottles, and the air compressor as surplus, so I can dispose of it. We are keeping some of the older air packs and some of the bottles that still had a few years that could be hydro-tested for training purposes.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Oh, I'm sure we have a special...
Is it to approve?
Yes, it is to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second. Sorry, there's only two of us here.
Any discussion, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, the motion was to approve the surplus. And the second item, Chief, is the assistance to firefighters grant?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. This past Friday, we submitted an application for the upcoming, it would be 2016 AFG grant. This was the same grant that we received the SCBA on last year. This year's submittal, we requested a total of $432,500 in hopes that if we were successful in receiving this grant, that we would be able to replace our 1999 KME rescue pumper. Again, the total was 432.5, so I would be, the grant is submitted, we only get 30 days to write and submit the grant. So, I would, so again, it was submitted on Friday, so I'd be looking for the board's approval to submit for the grant, as well as be able to accept the funds if received.
Are there any questions, Chief Coleman?
Yeah, I do have one question. I spoke with the Chief today, and I guess, Chief, just to go back to what we spoke of this morning, you were talking about refurb of that rescue, provided that we don't get that grant money. Can you kind of let us know about, a little bit about that?
Sure. This truck, this 99 KME, is on the Capitol just outside of the five-year plan, I believe it's year six. So, this truck is slated to be replaced in FY '19. If we were successful in getting this grant, we would move the purchase up. Really, like any piece of equipment, large piece of equipment, that we replace, and we did the same thing with the tower truck. Prior to going out, making the decision to purchase new, we would speak with the dealer, not only the dealer of that particular truck, although if you're going to do a refurb, typically it's not another dealer. So, we would have to deal with, in this case, KME directly, because it's, sometimes, depending on the piece, another dealer will remount, you know, another make or model, but typically we would be dealing with KME. So, much like we did with the tower, prior to making the decision to go new, we spoke extensively with the dealer on the refurb options, what that would cost, longevity of the piece, and ultimately, with the tower truck, there was really only about $100,000 to $150,000 difference between the refurb and new. So, we would do the same thing with this. We would do that with any large piece, we would weigh the cost benefit, we would look at, you know, really what the feasibility of the refurb is. Because the other thing that, you know, you have to take into consideration is, to talk about a refurb today, it's sort of unrealistic because it's three years away. So, we don't know what, you know, type of condition the vehicle will be in, you know, God forbid, but if the vehicle was involved in an accident in the, you know, in the next three years, all of those things are gonna go into the decision as to whether or not you're going to refurb a vehicle. So, it's really a decision that's, I don't wanna say a last-minute decision, but it's within the year that you're looking to work with a vendor to make, you know, to sign an agreement as to whether or not we're gonna make a decision that a refurb is an option. But, like any large piece of equipment, that's always something that will be looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else?
No.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the filing for an acceptance of the fund grants for the assistance to firefighters in the amount of $432,500.
Is there a second? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Good luck.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Continuing on with public comment, we have Caleb Moody. If you wanna, yes, Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, I want to welcome Caleb Moody back to the meeting, and Caleb can introduce his daughter as well, who's with him, and his son is over there, and his wife is with him.
This is Carly. You say hi.
Hi, Carly.
So, we have Caleb and his lovely family here tonight, and we're just happy to let the board know that Caleb has been selected as the, right now, the conditional building, local building inspector, and then upon final certifications from the state, and the state gives local building inspectors a year to get them, but we anticipate it'll be much earlier, Caleb will become the permanent building commissioner. And we went through a lengthy process, we had a number of great applicants, we had a lot of interviews with those candidates, and far and away, Caleb just outshined everybody. And, as the board probably recalls, Caleb was a building inspector for us on a part-time basis while he has been at DPW for over four years now, in the Facility Management Division, and as well as Highway. And I know Bill Coyle's probably not thrilled that we chose him, because Bill said he's one of, you know, he's just a great employee, but we are great to have him on our management team now, on this side. So, Caleb will be starting his role on December 15th, and I thought he might wanna say a few words, but we're thrilled to have you, and congratulations, and...
Thank you, I just wanted to thank all of you, and I'm excited to get started full-time.
And we're excited for you, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye. Now, you can go see yourself on TV when you get home. Bye.
Good luck.
We're lining them up early to be hired in 20 years.
And, next, we have Anita Shaw.
And, again, Anita Shaw has, and I'll let her speak, but she has been a volunteer for the town in a couple of different capacities that she can explain, but most recently, she's been in the Office of Development and Inspectual Services for about a month, helping out, because we really needed the assistance there. We had an eight-hour-a-week clerical position that was advertised to provide assistance to the ZVA and Planning Board for minutes, as well as to provide assistance to the Department of Inspectual Services and Development during the week as well. Again, it's about an eight-hour-a-week position, and, again, several applicants, and we are happy and pleased to say that Anita is one of them, she's still on a couple of committees in town, but I'll let her speak to that, too.
Thank you, Julie. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Auburn, and as Julie mentioned, an active community volunteer. I am the Chair of the Rock and Culture and Vice Chair of the Economic Development Committee, and I'm extremely excited about the opportunity and Inspectual Services team. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your new position.
Welcome aboard and congratulations.
I have to say, with these two hires, we're just thrilled. Caleb has been working, again, at DPW for quite a long time, but most recently, on top of DPW, the board had voted to make him a special employee. So, I do wanna mention on that end that Caleb has been the local building inspector, working with Nick in Tiana-Vica, who will remain with us for a couple of months while Caleb is working to get his certifications. So, we still have Nick on staff, which I do wanna make a mention of that, and Nick will be with us for probably a period of two or three months while Caleb's working on all the tests and additional things that he has to take. And this is the same path that Nick actually took when we hired Nick two years ago. So, it's a similar path, a lot of new building inspectors follow this path, so we're thrilled to have Caleb from early on. Caleb has also graciously offered to help Bill Coyle and the DPW during the winter with plowing, so his special employee status will allow him to do plowing when we need it to. So, we're not losing him completely, and Bill Coyle will be working to find a replacement for Caleb in DPW and the Facility Management Department, because he's just done a tremendous job. He and Jimmy Biergard just do great work, you know, you've seen the Salt Shed and the projects that they've done, the Randall Shed, and so many things. So, he's really done a great job. And, again, Anita's a great addition, she's just always personable and happy, and has really been helpful in the office. So, we're starting to rebuild the office, and I know there's an item on here later, so I just wanted to mention that we are moving forward. And on that note, we are interviewing this week for the Town Planner position, the part-time Energy Manager position, and the ACO, which is the Animal Control Officer position. So, for two weeks now, we've been in interviews pretty much back-to-back. So, we should have that office completely, hopefully, staffed up and ready to move forward by the first of the year.
Excellent, great, thank you. Congratulations.
Both of you, congratulations, we're thrilled.
So, that's it, and the public comment, moving on, there are no communications. Under Board of Selectmen items, we have a Finance Committee interview, and joining us tonight is Mallory O'Brien. Mallory has submitted an application for the Precinct Four position. This is to fill a vacancy that expires June 30th of 2015. So, this appointment, if voted tonight, would be to June 30th of 2015, and then you would be reappointed at that time for a three-year position. So, and I also want to just recognize the Chairman of the Finance Committee, who is here in attendance in support of the interview. Yeah, that's what I thought. You're good in the back row. So, good evening, Mallory. If you just wanna introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you wanna join the Finance Committee.
My name is Mallory O'Brien. I've been a resident of Auburn for almost four years now, grew up down the road in Milbury. I recently finished my MBA last year. I work in pharmaceuticals, so I work for Genzyme and Framingham in compliance, but as I studied for my MBA, I did have an affinity towards finance and really enjoyed my studies and that portion of the degree. And so, when I saw the vacancy for this, I thought it would be a great way to apply the new degree and also learn more about my town and how it's run. I currently am on the Parks and Rec Committee and have been for about three years, so it's really wonderful to be at the town events, meet other residents, for example, the Fourth of July celebration and the Fall Festival, it's always just wonderful to get out, and so I'd like to give more time to the town. Also, as I said earlier, my husband's on the police force in town, Officer Jonathan O'Brien, and we just added one new town resident about three months ago. So, we're really invested in the town, and, you know, our daughter will be attending Auburn Public Schools and involved, I'm sure, in many events, so I want to join.
Do we have questions?
I do not. You have been involved quite a bit in the Recreation Department, and have you been involved any portion of the budget?
No, I haven't.
Process in the town?
No.
Have you had a chance to review any of the meetings or see any of the processes that go along with it?
We usually play on TV some of the televised meetings. We keep local access on at our house quite often, so I've seen it televised, but I have not participated.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll just say that I've, I've had the opportunity to work with you at events like Special Olympics and the different events, and I will tell you that Mrs. O'Brien has a ton of energy. But, having said that, the Finance Committee has a huge time commitment. Do you have any concerns, especially during budget season, you could be meeting weekly or even, am I correct, Sharon, sometimes twice weekly?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, is that a concern?
Not at all, no.
Good, okay. Is there anything else you wanna add? Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion that we appoint Mrs. O'Brien to the vacancy for Precinct Four through June 2015.
To expire? Yep, okay.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Good luck in your new position, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, I look forward to it.
Thank you. And Gracie's too young to watch you on TV at this point, so you'll have to save some of those tapes. If we could, just because she's here, if we could move up item 6C...
So moved.
And 6D, I think they kinda tie together, 6D as well?
So, we're gonna move up 6C and 6D?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Through the chair, I'd like to have Darlene Coyle, who's the Acting Director of the Department of Development and Inspectual Services, come forward. And Darlene's gonna explain to you the contract amendment that was before you this evening. It's an informational item, but we did wanna share it with you. And I just wanna say, on behalf of Darlene, she's been the Acting Director since Adam Bernie left in October, and she's just done a tremendous job, and this contract in particular would fall under her purview anyway as the Director of Public Health, but she's also taken on numerous other projects in the department, and she's really been doing a great job keeping everything together. So, I just wanna publicly thank her, because she's done a tremendous job, and then ask her to just go through this amendment, so we can explain to the public and to the board what this means.
Sure, thank you, Julie. Good evening, everyone. So, I wanted to just let you know that we have a contract amendment for the Whaler Breiter contract, I think you have a copy in front of you. As you may recall, we have an existing Whaler Breiter contract that we entered into in 2006, and that was a 20-year contract. Recently, there has been a discussion amongst some of the towns that were involved in the original contract. Originally, there were, I believe, 35 or so towns that were involved in the contract, and within that contract, there was a clause that allowed the town to opt out if there was notification that was given by the end of December of 2015. Because of the competing disposal rates right now for tipping and trash, solid waste disposal, there was discussion amongst many of the communities involved in the original contract to kinda get together and have a discussion about leveraging our resources together to be able to go back to Whaler Breiter, to kinda have a discussion about what kinda savings there could be realized. So, just, really, this kind of happened within the past several months. I've attended meetings for this, Whaler Breiter was gracious enough to have us for a meeting in Milbury, and several of the towns showed up and asked questions. And before you is the agreement that was put together through the negotiating team. The negotiating team was a group of 10, 10 of the towns that represented all of our interests. Those 10 towns met on a closer basis with Whaler Breiter and their team, and their legal counsel, and we were able to take from all of the towns that were represented, 7% of our annual tonnage, to be able to hire a lawyer to review the contract that's before you. Attorney Giorgio from Copelman and Page actually worked to put this agreement together, so it is legally solid, it has been checked. And, so this agreement describes a savings that would actually go into effect starting January 1st of 2015. So, a couple of weeks away, we would be realizing savings immediately. Our current tipping fee, right now, is $75 and change per ton, and what that is, I'm sorry, $75.66. So, each year, on, on and around July 1st is our anniversary date, and the fees adjust. So, we were at $74 and change, it adjusted in July to the $75.66. Starting January 1st, again, a couple of weeks away, we would be going back down to $64 per ton. So, that actually would be in effect for, until 2000, the end of fiscal year, 2015, so June 30th, and it would also continue for fiscal year 2016. It will adjust for fiscal year 2017 for $66 per ton, and obviously, you can appreciate the savings that we would start right away. The CFO, Ed Kasenovich, was kind enough to put together a savings amendment, and just for the next six months, we would be saving $25,494 and change. So, that adjusts up to over $50,000, almost $51,000, and then there's a balance out for fiscal 2017 at $42,000. So, it's an immediate savings, because of the competing rates in the market right now, it makes a lot of sense to have this discussion and move forward with, with this amendment. As Ms. Jacobson explained, the original contract was signed by the Board of Selectmen, and since the reorganization of the town, the town manager enters into the contracts, but obviously, we wanted to bring good news to you, because anytime, you know, we can save them, the town, money, and this is considerable, this is something that we wanna let you know, and, you know, we're working hard to try to get any kinda savings that we can to move forward. I'd be more than happy to, to handle any questions that you may have.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, $12 a ton is a significant drop. What's the reason for that?
So, the, the markets are very compatible, competing right now, so there are choices for getting rid of solid waste. Their Whaler Breiter is a waste-to-energy plant, so they actually burn the trash, but they also have a very, a very intricate program where, when they burn the trash, they also produce energy that they actually sell back to the grid. So, it's, they're always looking for trash, and they need trash at different times of the year, so that actually fluctuates, so the market actually fluctuates. At different times of the year, they might have a large storage of trash in their facility, and, and it may drop off. So, in order to keep their plant going, they are always looking to make sure that they have a guaranteed, a guaranteed tonnage. So, that's where the, the strength of our agreement comes from, because we have several towns that support this agreement. There are other choices, you know, there are landfills out there, but we feel like this is a very good, a very good agreement, and we've had great service. I can also tell you that, you know, Whaler Breiter also offers to us a generous community partner in our medical waste disposal program that we have here in town. They've been very generous. Just a couple of weeks ago, I dropped off over, I think it was over 100 quarts of meds at the wheel. So, it's, it's something that, they do a lot of other community programs that help on a different level.
So, this contract, through the chair, this is only for solid waste? This is not for the recycles?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, this is solid waste disposal. We additionally have a, a contract for municipal pickup of trash that, as you may know, expires in the end of the fiscal year. So, I'm working closely with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee in putting together, you know, options for the town of, of solid waste disposal contracts.
Okay, and then one, one quick question, through the chair, to the town manager. Will the residents be seeing a reduction in their rates when their bill is coming up because of this reduction in the contract?
Through the chair, currently, we will have to analyze that in the long-term. Currently, when a resident pays, signs up for the trash removal service, they're actually getting two services, they're getting the trash pickup and then the hauling as well. So, while our cost on the disposal will be going down, with the contract expiring in June for the trash hauler, we are most likely going to be seeing an increase, because that contract has been in place for five years. And we've already been receiving, I think, we're looking through the committee, at four or five different proposals to be submitted for analysis for the cost, and all of them have been higher than we currently have. So, at this point, even with the offset in the disposal, we're going to likely be seeing an increase in the hauling, because the cost for that has gone up.
And that's the cost for hauling?
Mm-hmm.
Not for disposal?
Correct, it's for the pickup.
Okay.
So, until we know what new, what contract terms will leave for the new contract, we won't know what the final cost is, but at this point, we're anticipating, we're hoping that it will be a wash, if anything else. We're hoping that the fees may be washed out, the increase in fees may be washed out by the savings in this. I do have to say, right now, the average cost for a customer is $18 a week. That is extremely low. Compared to other communities, it's, it's less than half of many communities. So, we are still at a very low rate. I'm not optimistic that we're gonna be able to keep it at that low rate. When we've looked around and received bids from other, other haulers, we've looked at other communities, and their rates have been significantly higher than ours are.
Thank you.
Darlene?
Through the chair, thank you, Julie. That, that is correct. So, we are, you know, working with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to get as many proposals as makes sense to look at, to compare on the, on the hauling side. And I think it is important, it's an important piece, to be able to make that connection for the residents, because they get, they get a trash bill, it's one trash bill, but we incorporate the, the cost from both hauling and disposal. If we can save money on the disposal, with the expectation that, you know, the hauling may go up, it just drives home the point, to be able to make sure that the residents, the more that they can recycle, it helps on our disposal costs. Right now, our recycling rates are about 25 to 27%. We are always looking for ways to increase that, and we, Amy Sullivan, who's the Solid Waste Advisory Chair, is very creative in trying to secure, you know, DEP grants for us, and I think you may recall, the composting bins that we rolled out this past season were a big hit, we're already on our second order. So, any, anything that, that helps increase awareness to the residents... So anything that helps increase awareness to the residents, obviously, that's not for trash, but it kind of creates that idea that the more people recycle, it will cut down on the disposal cost, which ultimately helps us when we go to bring trash to the Whaler Brader.
So just to follow up on Mr. Holstrom's comment, it is your intention to use any savings realized in this new amendment, amended contract for the disposal to put towards, you know, a potential offset?
So to answer the question, any savings that we have in this contract would essentially be in the solid waste budget. So it's going to, it's going to be spread out between either hauling or disposal.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Did anyone have anything else? And there's no vote required because you said?
Correct, this is informational. I believe we have to have this signed once all the communities approve of this draft. Right now, everyone is in the process of bringing it to their authorities for signing. In this case, it's informational. But we should be signing it by the end of December because it becomes effective till January 1st.
Yes, we'll be signing this just as soon as, soon as we can. I know Attorney Henigan will, you know, give his vote of approval on it and we'll move forward.
And Sophie, just want to stay for a minute for the next item, which is Department of Developmental and Inspection Services Staffing Update.
Sure, this is through the chair. A little bit repetitive because we did, thank you, bring up the employees prior to getting to this item so they wouldn't have to wait. But I do want to just remind the board that we are in the process of restaffing and filling positions in this department. It's an extremely busy department. Our building permits alone are around the nine-hundred annual range. Many of our surrounding communities are in the four to five-hundred range, so it's a busy office. Having Caleb start next week as the conditional local inspector. And then, again, he will take the tests that are required under the law. You have one year, and you can't actually go for those tests until you've been in the position for a while. So he'll be taking those tests. Nick Antonavica will stay on with us. So I want to thank Nick. I want to thank Chris Lund, who's also been on with us. And will be continuing for a couple of weeks as well for helping us out to get us through this situation. And Caleb as well, because he was doing both jobs at DPW and then working here at night. But he's got great experience. He's worked with Nick, and he's got a really good handle on it. Where we are actually caught up, for the most part, on our permits and on our, on the paperwork. It still continues, there's still quite a bit of it. So I don't want to say that it's not going to continue. But we've done very well with the staff in place. And we hope soon to be able to do even better with Caleb on board full time. Anita will be an excellent addition. She's very familiar with the office. And as some of you know, the Chair of the Economic Development Committee here knows, Mr. Carpenter, that she's been on the Economic Development Committee too. And she's, she's a dynamo, she's got a lot of great talent. She actually helped us with a lot of different projects before she was hired as an eight-hour employee. So again, we're in the process of interviewing for the town planner position. And we had interviews last week, interviews this week. Also trying to hire a part-time energy manager, for which we had a one-year grant for hiring that to help coordinate and manage a lot of our green initiatives. And also the ACO, which is the Animal Control Officer. So Darlene, actually, if you have a moment, if you wouldn't mind, just explaining the ACO and how, what that position's going to be doing now versus what we had.
Sure. Thank you. So the Animal Control Officer position, happy to tell you that, as many of you may remember, that position used to be a full-time position when Kathy Zabina was here. She was in the position for years and was, had awesome service to the town. I think it was maybe over thirty years that she was in the position. So at that time, we had a dog officer, she was the dog officer position. And there was a separate position for animal inspector. The animal inspector was responsible for a lot of the agricultural and what we call barn inspections. So moving forward, since I've been in the director's role in the past year, we've seen that there's really a need for the animal, for the animal response here in town. There's, the residents here really care about animals. We get calls on a daily basis for people that are concerned. Actually, just this morning, I took a call for somebody that had lost two dogs. Obviously, with the cold weather and our closeness to all the main highways, I mean, she was just distraught. So we get emergency calls like that every day. And so there's a need to bring that position back to a full-time position. And we want to do it that makes sense to have the animal control officer, which formerly was known as the dog officer, be able to cover both the barn inspections as well as the needs for the shelter and so forth. So moving forward, this position will handle all of that. They'll follow up on licensing, making sure that people are licensing their pets, you know, taking a look at our animal bylaws, which I know are in the process of being reviewed and updated. So it's going to be a great opportunity for somebody to come in and really take the needs and bring them to their full capacity. So I'm really excited about it. I, you know, I think that it would be great to be able to get back to having rabies clinics where people can come in and get, you know, low-cost vaccinations for their animals, making sure that people are able to respond, you know, in a role. We have, the staff that we have now are, they're wonderful. They are very knowledgeable. They do what they can, but they're in on-call capacity. So if something takes them away, then they can't come that minute. They come when they can, and they do a great job for us. So we want to be able to give the positions the tools they need in order to move forward and make the position whole again.
Great. Through the chair, I just want to add to it. In the last three years, we've tried, the town administration has tried several different options for regional partnerships. We've tried with probably a total of four different communities to try to come up with a regional partnership to hire a regional ACO with potentially one or even two part-time ACOs working within the structure. And it just, there was, we tried every iteration, and we could not come up with a way to make it work so that our town is going to get the services that it needs 24/7 and at the same time, be able to provide that service for other communities as well. We all felt that the volume of calls that we got and the volume of work that has to be done here certainly would be a detriment to us entering into a regional partnership because we, on a call basis, were far higher than any of the other communities that we looked at. The geographic distance also makes it difficult because you want to be careful that when you're sharing an animal control officer with another community, that you still have an appropriate time response for emergency calls. So I know we had discussed often regionalizing the position. And financially, we could not find a way to make it make sense. And most importantly, from a service perspective, it did not make sense. Had we been able to do it, we would have. But our number one priority has to be the Auburn residents. And what we provide to them is a service, and this was the best way to do that. One of the reasons that we are going to be able to increase the position from an on-call position to a full-time position, as Darlene mentioned, is to increase the function involving licensing. We believe that if we pursue that in working with the Town Clerk's Office and more aggressively go after licenses, we'll be able to generate the revenues that we need to make the position full-time.
So just going back, you know, to the staffing this department, I know there was some discussion a couple of meetings ago with concern with people leaving to go to other communities. And there was some discussion on a salary analysis. Have you had the opportunity to complete that? Are you looking at the steps or categorizing?
Through the chair, we have not completed that. That will take several months to look, several months to look at all the different positions that we have. Because I believe the board had asked to look at all of the bylaw positions, not just this particular office. What we do have, though, is an analysis of the building commissioner salaries in about ten different communities that are surrounding us. So we did complete that. And we will be working on the other positions, working through the budget this year as well as looking ahead to potentially making some changes down the road. We can't keep hiring people, training them, giving them the experience, and then losing them and starting all over again. It most certainly sets the department back, especially in positions that are what I would call professional certified positions, such as a planning position or a building commissioner. You have to have certain qualifications, certifications, training, experience, and education for those types of positions. You cannot just hire someone to come in and take them just because they're available. It goes beyond that. So certain positions do require a certain set of qualifications. And those are the positions we really need to focus on right now.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else on this? Thank you, Darlene, for the update.
Thank you, Darlene. So going back to our Board of Selectmen general items. We have the annual liquor license renewals first. You have a page in front of you for the annual license renewals. There are no outstanding issues on these licenses. We have the all-alcohol package stores, malt store wine and malt, I'm sorry, package store wine and malt, club licenses, all-alcoholic, all-alcoholic restaurant and wine and malt restaurant. I know, just in case anyone else has a disclosure, I am a member of the Auburn Webster Lodge of Elks and also the Auburn Sportsman's Club. I do have a disclosure filed at the Town Clerk's Office. And I'll just disclose that tonight, that I am a member, but I have no financial interest in the license. If there are no other disclosures, is there a comment, question, or emotion?
I'll make a motion that we approved the license renewals provided at all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And also in your packet, the annual license renewals, common viculus drain license, Ottawa PM motor vehicle class one, motor vehicle class two, gas and oil, drain layers, consignment, entertainment, I think I got them all, hotel motel. We have a list to this point of one hundred and ninety licenses. These have been reviewed by the Department of Developmental Services and also the Treasury Collectives. And there have been no issues found on these current licenses. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I do have one question. I know that every year that we get into this, we always have a few of the stragglers coming through. Do you know, have we got many of those left? I don't need numbers, but have we got?
Yeah, I think this is the majority. But I think there are still some that will be coming through till the end of the month.
Okay. So we will be doing a meeting probably the fifth week to finalize them for 2014.
Yeah, they do have until the 31st to commence. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, and make a motion, we approved the license renewals provided at all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have gift acceptance, and we have an anonymous donation in the amount of five dollars to the fire department gift account. Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We have no proclamations, town manager items, I believe we, oh, no, just one. One, which one?
Don't do P.
Oh, I thought that was the chiefs. Okay, we have one grant, the fiscal year fourteen and fifteen, hazardous materials emergency preparedness planning grant.
Through the chair, that's correct. The FY fourteen, fifteen HMEP grant has been, this is, it's not a, what I would call a competitive grant. It's a grant that, it's a formula-based grant. So the state provides the town with the $1 amount that it will be getting. And as Mr. Holstrom may remember from his days as Emergency Management Director, this is a very, very specific grant. It has to be used to fund materials or cleaning components of the hazmat emergency preparedness. So we will be, the grant is actually due a week from today, on the 15th. So the grant is not completed yet. We had conversations with the state as late as Friday afternoon to determine the eligibility for what we'd like to apply for. Last year, we used the funds to purchase two iPads, and it's worked out great. The iPads are to be used for hazmat planning and preparation. And we will be applying for two additional iPads this year as well. One for the Emergency Management Director and one for the fire captain, who would be the one responding to hazmat events. So we can keep building maps, codes, and concept plans on it as well as tier three information related to hazmat events. So that is what we will be putting in for. Again, that grant is due a week from today. So it's not a competitive grant, it's formula-based. Many communities, unfortunately, it is hard to find an eligible category for this grant. But the iPads worked out well last year, and we've got the zone to move forward and apply for those again.
Great. Are there any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we authorize the grant and acceptance of the grant funds for the fiscal year fourteen and fifteen HMEP, the hazardous materials emergency preparedness planning grant, worth $1,500.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Do you have anything else?
I actually just have one thing I just want to mention. We have sent out invitations to the boards and commissions. And just to let the Board of Selectmen know again that every year, we have an annual holiday open house that is sponsored by town administration along with the management team. And we have the Bay Path Culinary Arts students prepare sandwiches and desserts. We have the Auburn High School band come and play holiday music for us. And it's a really nice event, December 18th, 12 to 2, in this room. It was done initially for an employee recognition. Myself and the department heads wanted to, and some of the division heads wanted to get together and do something for the employees, just to bring everyone together, celebrate the holiday, give everyone an opportunity to mingle a little bit, stop in here on their lunch break and grab a bite to eat and talk to fellow employees. We extended that invitation a couple of years ago to the board and commission members as well. So again, we want to let them know that they're more than welcome to come. We'd love to have them. It's 12 to 2 on Thursday, December 18th.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on to Board of Selectmen member items. We have in our packet the revised license application that Mr. Holstrom has worked on. And what we are voting on is the top application. This is currently, the second page is currently being used by Department of Inspection Services at NDCG. That goes through the process. But this is an updated form Mr. Holstrom has prepared.
Make a motion, we vote to accept the revised license application form.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, and the next item, one of our goals was to set office hours. So we had discussed possibly doing office hours from, on Mondays prior to our meeting and on Saturday mornings. And we could rotate them between Town Hall and the Auburn Public Library. So what I would propose to do is have Sharon send out an email with the dates and just have members basically sign up. And once we get that email sent out, we'll advertise it. Members still willing to hold office hours on Monday prior to a meeting and Saturday mornings for one hour? And it wouldn't be every week, it would be probably twice a month.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Do any members have any other items?
Nothing here.
Is there any public comment? We have the minutes of July 14th, 2014. If there are no corrections or omissions, the Chair will accept them as written. Is there any other business before the board? I will accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.